One thing for sure and two things for certain is I'm never gonna hear you out if what I'm hearing is stupid. I'm not gonna hear that. I'm not gonna receive that. That's not my ministry. A lot of y'all sit and give too much of y'all time and effort to people who don't deserve it. Why would you be listening to somebody telling you that two plus two is ninety-two when you know it's not? That, that, that's a waste of my time. It's not of the kingdom. It's not. And I would not subject myself to foolishness, okay? Because I don't like to consider myself to be foolish, so I don't wanna sit with it. No, it ain't nothing we can do. We, we, we done talking. I'm done talking. I'm done listening as well. Yeah, so I don't know who needs to hear that. I hope it reaches you and I hope it touches your spirit. Stop entertaining foolishness. Because people will start seeing you as foolish or somebody to be played with, and I, I don't like to be played with. Go play Atari. Go play some spades, but don't play with me. Alright, love you back. One thing for sure.
So, what's up, what's up? It's your girl, Super. Listen, I'm flying in the room today. Flying in the room, trying to get quickly set up because the meeting is gonna start. We are going to look at Ryan's feed today because he's gonna be at the meeting. Um, I had a few things going on today and was not able to go out there, but I did wanna bring you some information. Because today is a special meeting and I'll speak to you guys in just a moment. Keep speaking in the comments. If you're in the comments, keep speaking in the comments so that I can see you when I get to that. Okay? Okay, hold on. Turn this down. Alright, because... Let me see who's up in the room. I'm sure we got some looking. Yeah, uh, I'm sure we got some people just in here with your looking asses. Hello to you, first and foremost, the looking ass people that's too scared to speak. How are you today? I hope you're well. I, I hope, I hope you're feeling well, even though you're over here watching somebody that you do not like. I hope you're great. Now let me speak to the people who ain't afraid to say some shit with their chests. Let's see what we got going on. What's going on, wild gal? You made it first. Come on now. Dave Bryson, what's up always and forever. Thank you, Dave Bryson, to my mod, to all of my mods. Thank you. Hey, GMC, how are you? What up, Paul Roberts? Paul, you not going to the meeting tonight? I look forward to public comment too. I know there's one person that's gonna be commenting. Uh, John Sokey, how you doing? What's up, Jody? Thank you for popping in. Crystal Monique, what's up? What's going on? How you doing? How you doing? Uh, the meeting's gonna get started in a few minutes. Let me find Ryan's page and then I'm going to go over a, a few things with you all that I came on early to do. I came on early, um, because there's a special meeting tonight at the township. I do not subscribe to, uh, the Lansing Journal. I don't look at them. However, I did see a post, uh, that was saying that, um, it was a special meeting tonight and it had something to do with some cyber stuff. Okay, Kim Johnson. Um, so let's, let's get ready to talk about this. So, back in March, March of this year, um, let me put this up on the screen. Let me see which one I wanna put up first. Cause we need to talk about this before the meeting starts. Because it's, it's a question. It's a question that I have and I'm not, I'm not understanding how we got here. If this was allegedly already taken care of. Is it this one? Yeah. Okay, so back in March, back in March of, let me, let me make this bigger for you guys so you guys can see it. I wanna make sure that everybody can see it. I want you to see the date. Okay, so back in March, there was a special meeting and I knew this and I kept telling you all that there was already a special meeting for this cyber, uh, situation. So, you know, what my sources told me back then, this is back in March, was that there was some sort, sort of situation with the township's, um, website where the website allegedly was hacked and maybe allegedly held for ransom. Um, now, one of my followers, um, did alert or tried to alert the township, um, about their, um, deficiencies in their, uh, cybersecurity for their website. However, those emails went unanswered, uh, and my follower who is a cybersecurity expert, um, was ignored. Um, back in March of twenty, somebody, um, one of my mods or somebody in the chat, just keep me abreast if you see Ryan go live so that I can go directly to him because the meeting should be getting started in about five minutes. Okay, so March, uh, twentieth of twenty twenty-five, there was a special meeting. Hey, Common Sense, what's up? I know that's right, Common Sense. Um, there was a special meeting back in, uh, March, March twentieth, uh, twenty twenty-five, okay? And if you look on this agenda, under new business, it says emergency approval of this agreement with Constangie, Brooks, Smith, and Profite. Emergency approval of this agreement with Arit Advisors LLC. So, the first one, number one, is a law firm that specializes in cyber litigation. The second, uh, company, Arit Advisors, they are an IT cyber, uh, company, um, that will come in and secure, you know, everything that was not secure. As far as your websites, as far as your network, uh, and making sure that any malware, spyware, um, any viruses are removed, uh, and they can also try to, um, investigate the source of the hijacker. If there is a hijacker, they can investigate and follow the IP addresses and links. There's, there's, um, ways that they can follow them through different networks on how they came into the system and where they came into the system, and then they can go from there finding out who that person was. That is what that company specializes in, and the litigation, uh, the lawyers here, they specialize in cyber litigation. So they, once the Arit Advisors locates the hacker, then they would be the people to take over from there so that they could litigate. Um, but my sources told me at this time that someone had hijacked the website, um, and that is the reason why, you know, some people, you can visit the website once and then you try to go back and you can't unless you have a, um, VPN that varies your, uh, IP addresses. Okay, and so my question is, um, what happened to this? Why was this not taken care of? It was voted on. Let's see what the votes, uh, were because I do have the meeting minutes. And there's, there's some strange, some strangeness going on with these, with these minutes. I'm gonna share this tab instead. This is the minutes from that meeting that I just showed you, March twentieth. Let's go down to where there was talk about the cyber, uh, company. Okay, here it is right here. New business. Supervisor Pro Temp Gonzalez asked for a motion to approve the emergency approval of this agreement. So why are we back in a special meeting? Why is there being a special meeting called? He gone live? Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Hold on. We can talk about this afterwards for a little bit. This meeting is not gonna be that long. But if they already approved this, why are we doing it again? Okay, if this has, okay, I'm listening to it and I'm watching it now. If this has already been approved, as you can see right here on March twentieth, hey, Bobo? If this was approved on March twentieth, as you see right here from the meeting notes, okay, it says emergency approval of disagreement between Constangie, Brooks, Smith, and Profite. The motion was made by trustee Carla and seconded by trustee Wedeman. There being no questions or comments, clerk Wales called the roll. On the roll call, the vote was three to none. Absent was trustee Everett, Gray Everett, and supervisor Hager. There being affirmative votes, the motion carried. Then they voted for the cyber, um, security cleanup company right here, three to none. That was approved. So how are we back? Somebody gotta make it make sense to me about how we are now back in a special meeting to approve some sort of cybersecurity situation.
Again, it's pretty short and then they had, they were supposed to vote on this insurance. The four, what looks like four insurance policies. They're supposed to vote us time and they, I mean, I'm wondering why they would do that, um. So yeah, that's it. Meeting.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna close his chat, so. Okay, we're gonna talk about after this meeting and I'm gonna show you, talk about meetings. They're a little strange to me. I don't understand them. Let me see, the meeting's already be started. Or at least get ready. We got too many. Let me just make sure I'm not behind. Is somebody watching Ryan on another? Are they still talking? We're gonna talk. We're gonna talk about, uh, these other. Is everybody here in this town okay? Let me know. Okay. The this particular particular um, agenda item. So I'm a little concerned about what is happening with the crazy business. Let it stop. Now stop. I'm eating here. Come on. You don't get out of here. I don't know why they be praying. Fixing Jesus. I'll answer your questions afterward.
Okay, that's true. Particularly why are the insurance policies so important? Also, which insurance brokers were chosen and how they were selected? And do any of the board members have a stake in any of these insurance companies? I think that's very important to clarify, especially given the, um, the, uh, controversy regarding insurance that, you know, that has been reported on where supervisor was, uh, serving on regulatory, regulatory board and then was found to have some conflicts of interest and some ownership stake in some insurance companies. So I think that would be very important to clarify for the township. Uh, also, the real, the real estate tax rate for next year, what is it? Is it, is it zero or the taxes going up like zero percent? I know supervisor just said something like, well, they're not going up, but you know, if they've gone up every year by two percent and, you know, a lot of boards will just say, oh, it's not changing, but your taxes are still going up. They're just going up at the same percentage rate. So, I think that's clarified. Um, the Mr. Letzinski, I did read all the reports you mentioned on the website, but they're not really the financial reports to this township. They're not the audits. They're just basically regurgitation about the township staff has reported. We really need that forensic audit. Um, and I did ask around, but I mean, no one I could find that they work with the federal government or not had any, any uh, reason to think that just because of federal investigation going on that you couldn't easily find a company to do a forensic audit.
Did something happen to Ryan? It will happen. I hate that basement.
I mean, this is what we're doing to make cuts. This is what we're doing. We wanna lower your taxes.
I don't know what be happening in that basement, but I feel like this has something to do with the, the website being hacked and all of that jazz. Because that will make their internet connection unstable. I got it. Or maybe it's just me. It could just be me, though. I'm feeling like I should've went to this meeting tonight. Have mercy, Jesus. Oh, Lord. It look like they interfering with the, with the, um, the signal, but for me, this has a lot to do with whatever is happening with the cyber stuff. Cause I don't have anything up on my computer but this and my streaming art. Hold on, I'm finna, I'm finna check and see if it's my. I'm finna check and see if it's me. Cause this is freaking annoying. Hold on. Not you people. This woman is the chaperone. You. Woo.
Not what I said. That's incorrect.
Enigma frequently. Cause I just don't have to know that. That's crazy. Cause I got a question to ask you. What is? Answer her, Ryan. It's terrible. Where's your chaperone? She need a chaperone. She needs a freaking chaperone. I promise you. Alliance? Oh, heck no. I'ma tell y'all who Alliance is.
There's a motion by trustee Stanley, seconded by trustee Gonzalez to approve Alliance's continued coverage of the township's crime insurance policy. Clerk please take the vote.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Avan?
Yes.
Trustee Stubb?
Yes.
Trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Supervisor here.
Aye.
No answer.
The five over the affirmative, the motion carries. I will see you. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the continued coverage from Alliance for the township workers' compensation policy. Is there a motion? Second, there's a motion by trustee Gonzalez, seconded by trustee Stanley for the continued coverage from Alliance for the township worker compensation policy. Clerk please take the vote.
Trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Trustee Stubb?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Avan?
Yes.
Supervisor here.
Aye. This time, I would like to entertain a motion for the continued coverage from Alliance for the road of rich property and liability insurance policy. Is there a motion? So. Second, there's a motion by trustee Stanley, seconded by trustee Gonzalez for the continued coverage from Alliance for the road of rich property and liability insurance policy. Clerk please take the vote.
Trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Stubb?
Aye.
Trustee Avan?
Yes.
Supervisor here.
Aye. The five over the affirmative with the motion. So we took over, you know, made my team. These are the same. The last weeks, uh, what we did do because they were not finalized, we wanted to make sure that we had, uh, so we definitely stated, these are the same insurance companies that So we definitely stated, these are the same insurance companies that were hit product to our Take it over.
Okay, let this this at is so unfair. Okay, but y'all just I had to take that down because they adjourned the meeting anyway. I thought I was gonna be a short meeting, adjourned their meeting and the meeting is adjourned. Now I have a question. Paul, are you still in here? Paul, are you still in here? If you're still in here, can you do me a favor? Can you go to the agenda for tonight because I don't have it? Can you go to the agenda for tonight and put in the chat? The insurance company, because I want to tell y'all something about this insurance company. Because this is boy, Lord have mercy. Who who can go find that agenda and put that in the comments for me so I can show? Tell you something about this insurance company. Matter of fact, I'm gonna look it up. I'm gonna look up the one that I think it is, but I need somebody to confirm and put the correct spelling of the insurance company in the chat for me. Who can do that for me? Go to the agenda at the Lansing Journal. Okay, Bobo, can you do it for me? Thank you. Okay. Before, while we wait for the correct spelling to be put into the chat, I want to show you the other thing. So you saw the cyber insurance. So I don't know why they would be getting cyber insurance with Alliant when they already passed. Um, you know, getting, doing something with these other people, but hey, maybe that's something different. So you have the company that's supposed to clean up the insurance. Alright, so now we're gonna, we're looking at this meeting from alright, we're looking at the meeting minutes. I showed you the meeting minutes before this meeting started of the March 20th meeting. Now we're looking at the meeting minutes from March the 25th. And when you scroll down to new business, it says supervisor pro temp Gonzalez asked for a motion to request a proposal for IT services. The motion was made by trustee Wedeman and seconded by trustee Carlisle. Trustee Wedeman questions that this is for and asked question what it was for and asked the IT manager Leon Messi for additional information. Mr. Messi stated that his department didn't put this on the agenda. There being no further questions or comments. Clerk key called the role and then they didn't pass anything, but they had already passed it at the previous meeting. This is the 25th. Okay, that was very, I didn't understand that, but it is what it is. Okay, cyber insurance. They didn't put the 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 company name. Bobo in the new business, cyber insurance, crime insurance, they didn't put the company name, the spelling of the company name on the form. Because he said Alliant. Y'all let me know if you heard him say Alliant. Because I have all sorts of questions. Okay, so they put no name. Why did they not put a name on the agenda? Why did they not put the name of the insurance company on the agenda? But we heard them verbally say, did they say Alliant? Or did they say Alliance? Hold the line, please, while I'm seeing. Why did they not put the name of the? Okay, thank you for the, thank you, Bobo. Well, I'm getting ready to do something in a minute, okay? Lord have mercy. That's a question. That is a real question that everybody should look at. And they need to stop sending 2,000 year old Nina Graham to go after people at these meetings. I don't know who you are, but somebody need to get your grandmother. You need to get your grandmother, okay? Get your grandmother, cause she is out without a chaperone. Cause that's insane that every time somebody make a comment, she gonna point her finger and act like she chastising somebody. Sit down. Sit down. And if you want to do something for us, tell your grandson or your godson to do the right thing. That's what you should do. Cause I don't know what they telling you. I don't know what your understanding is of what is going on, but you should tell him to do the right thing. My question still stands. Why was the insurance company name not put on the agenda? So now the residents cannot know the name of the insurance company that they paying for? Let me show you something. If it was this company and this company does provide cyber insurance, that's what I was checking. It does provide cyber and crime insurance. But why would the township be using this particular insurance company? If it was the Alliant Insurance Company, you see this right here? The reason why I asked this question, do you see this? Can y'all see this? It says, is Michael Madigan's son the CEO of Alliant Insurance? They say no. Andrew Madigan's son is not the CEO of Alliant Insurance. He is the senior vice president for the company. Okay? Why is that important? Because what do this say right here? This says Chicago suburbs raided by FBI have ties to Madigan's son. And it was the Alliant Insurance Company that was raided. Huh? Right there, what did I say right there? Four municipalities targeted in a sweeping corruption probe. All have contracted with Alliant miserable where House Speaker Mike Madigan's son works to secure insurance deals with local governments. Make it make sense to me. Make it make sense to me, why we doing the same thing with different people? Somebody make it make sense. Or tell me I'm lying. Cause you can tell me I'm lying. If you feel like I'm lying, tell me I'm lying. Why should we have to avoid the township? For who the insurance company is? When it should be on the meeting agenda? Who the insurance company is? Tell me why we doing the same dance with different partners? Make it make sense. Or you can tell me I'm lying. I know I'm not, but you can tell me if that's what you want to do. Anybody want to tell me I'm lying? You, right now, you can Google this for yourself. He said Alliant Insurance Company. You can Google exactly what I just did, just showed you how to Google it. Look at that headline. Why? Would the township even be getting insurance from them? Huh? You can't lie and say it's because they're the only insurance company that will provide the township with insurance because little stank is no longer the supervisor. The supervisor is now a senator. So there should be no problems with them securing insurance at a reasonable rate. Excuse me. Can you go and look, um, Bobo at the agenda for tonight's meeting? You're gonna have to go to the Lansing Journal because they don't have it on the they don't have it on the, um, yeah, Alliant Insurance. Thank you, Bobo. Thank you. And that's who I thought they had cyber insurance with. But why would you have cyber insurance with them? Let me tell you something about Frank Zuccarelle. If you go back and you for and you ask for who had the cyber insurance when Frank Zuccarelle was there? I bet you you won't find that it was Alliant, cause he refused to allow them to cover the township. Make it make sense why this board is allowing this to go forward. With this right here, what I just just showed you. Why should be, I don't care how many years ago it was. If he still worked there, why should we be doing business with them? Why should the residents be paying? What is happening? What is going on? Who is getting what? Is my question. And then here you got 2,000 year old Nina Gramson up here yelling at people like they shouldn't have questions or they can't ask questions. Sit down, pipe down. When we want to learn how to bake pound cakes and cupcakes and make dressing and all of that stuff, we'll call you. But until then, stop defending this madness. Stop chastising people for asking questions, cause they got the right to. You don't want to ask questions, that's your business, stay home. This makes no sense to me. And I'm asking, I'm asking for me. I'm asking for me. Thank you, thank you, Bobo, I see it. Alliant Insurance Company. Go and do your own research, I dare you. I dare you, but I just showed you. I showed you in real time. I just showed you. Go and do your own research. And there should be loads of people showing up to the meeting and asking, why did we get insurance from this company that was raided by the FBI? I don't care how many years ago it was. Huh? Ain't nobody gonna have no answers. Ain't nobody gonna want to give no answers and no one's gonna think they gonna send Nina Graham after you to say, she probably accosted Ryan after this meeting. I guarantee you she did. I guarantee you that she ran Ryan down after this meeting and tried to accuse him of being racist. Because that's what she was sent to do. But I would tell her, you ask your questions and I'mma ask mine. Ryan's still out in the parking lot. I don't know what happened, something must have happened. Why is he at Ryan's car? Now, the security, that security guard is very nice. I wish y'all could put this back up on the screen. Let me see if I could put it back up on the screen without it buffering. Hold on, hold that line, please. But I bet you Nina Graham accosted him after this meeting because she did, she's done that to several people. Asking them like they can't ask a question at the meeting. Let's see. So like, I don't know. Oh no, cause Ryan is in a situation that right now. No, I don't believe that Ryan is great. Hold the line, please, I'mma be right back, okay? Hold the line. Cause this is diehard. Y'all tell me how Ryan is racist and he live in Harvey. Make that make sense. Make it make sense that Ryan lived in Harvey and he racist? Yeah, I cannot with these people. I cannot with these people. Y'all let me know if y'all can hear Ryan's laugh.
Uh, it is financial almost financial panic time, you know? It's it's really hard to afford.
Okay. Yeah, I can hear it.
People are tightening their belts. The one lady, the last meeting she spoke that she was going to have to consider putting her house. And the, um, exactly what Wyoming folks should look dissolve in the town.
Calling insurance broker.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Obviously, yes.
Yes.
I'm gonna ask on the school board with 205, she's very close to Napoleon Harris. And she's trying to intimidate me, who is just a resident.
That man living in Harvey, make it make sense.
Over the meeting.
How he is racist and a man living in Harvey.
And he is go, that Italian should need to go. And they're still there laughing and chatting. You can see Mary Avant, you can see Valerie Stubbs, you can see, I think it's Byron Stanley. He, um, Ms. Graham and that gentleman that that was hosting me there. And then the ladies with the Lansing Journal, which I wanted to add a few things and they are there. But yeah, this, well, like never ever be treated like this at our And they're just laughing, I guess they think it's funny. So they they get to, they get to talk and stay around and laugh and have a good time. But they're harassing me because I'm asking question.
So Mr. Harris has made a comment that Ryan said something that was untrue, but he did did not say something that was untrue. Everything have a contrast. Hold on, I had to take that out of my, I had to take the they need to fix these problems with, um, with the stream yard. I'm gonna be finding me a different provider because I can't be dealing with this. But yes, yes, Paul. Paul, Alliant is the only, and I think they did them for all of the insurance. My question is, why? Why are they using them? How is that benefit, why? Hold on, let me see, cause why I'm gonna get, what did you say? Oh, you over there on a different channel, I'm looking at a different channel. But why? Okay, are we doing the same thing, but with different people? I think so. Now, now this is proven. I just showed you all that they I just showed you all that they, um, you know, the company that they are using and you can do your own research about the company. Do what did, what did Minion be playing? Do your fucking research. Do it. I mean, I can do it for you, but I showed you. You wanted to hear what was going on with Ryan? Nothing. Um, this is what they do every time. Like I, when I went to the, the meeting last time, the, the parking lot was blocked off. They told me I couldn't go into the parking lot, but when Nina Graham pulled up, they let her into the parking lot. And I told Officer Storm, I'm finna go in this parking lot. And he was like, the parking lot closed? I said, no, it's not, because if Nina Graham is in this parking lot, the parking lot is not closed. And there's a meeting in about ten minutes. Get out my way. Because that, that, that doesn't make any sense. And it, and it's wild that Nina Graham goes to these meetings and does this stuff. That, that, that is absolutely false. If you're coming over here, you're seeing a ruckus on Ryan's page. Nina Graham insinuated that Ryan was racist. I don't know if she was insinuating that the ladies from the Lansing Journal was racist, but I know definitely she said it to Ryan. She looked over there down first and then she looked at Ryan. Now, why should you be in this meeting acting like people cannot ask questions and make comments? Because they can. I mean, this would be, we've been reduced to, we've been reduced to the girl, Golden Girls coming out and, and saying stuff to people now. And, and we going back to everybody voting yes and not explaining anything to the public? I mean, we can do our own research on, on the insurance company. And it was the insurance company that was raided by the FBI in twenty nineteen. Michael Madigan's sons work, works there. And he still works there if there's nothing that has changed. Not that I can see. I, I will look it up tomorrow and give you guys an update, but I don't see that they, they have changed any of that. He still work there. And what was the raid all about? These are the conversation, the same conversations that we had when, when Lil Stank was in office, the exact same. Go check my channel. We talked about this Berry Insurance Company. And Chris and, um, Carmen and, um, I don't even know who else it was, voted no to them when Lil Stank put them on the agenda. They voted no. Now today we have unanimous yeses. What is happening? I'm not even gonna blame it on the full moon. I'm gonna ask again, what are people getting? What are people getting? Huh? And we have switched out the goons for the Golden Girls. That's what we doing? Amazing. Absolutely amazing. Diabolical. Okay, well, you saw it in real time. I just popped in to do this little special meeting to give y'all that information. And now you can go and do your own research and formulate your own opinion. I started it for you. I have it somewhere on this platform about this insurance company. I sure do. Scour through this, through this YouTube channel and you'll find it. Okay, Bobo, absolute comedy. Okay, absolute comedy. Okay? And in some cases, like the case we having right now, I mean, I don't see how we any different with it. We just, like I said, we went from the goons to the Golden Girls. From the YNs to the GNs, the grandmas. And everybody voting in the affirmative. Nobody asking questions, nobody saying, well, if people look this, you not even thinking in your mind, if people look up this insurance company, they gonna find out all of these things. So should we not give the public an explanation as to why we're using them? Even if it is a lie? Shouldn't we just say something? Should we say these are the only people that would insure the, the township, which we know gonna be a lie? Because they were the only option when Tiffany was in the seat because she couldn't be insured. But now you have a senator in the seat. They are, they are not the only option. Question is, why are they being used? What are the rates at which you are paying? None of that was disclosed. What, what are we paying? What do we actually pay? What are the rates? How much coverage is it? Does Michael Madigan's son still work there? Why was it raided in, in, in twenty nineteen? Why did the FBI raid them in twenty nineteen? Has all that been cleared up? And then here come Nina Graham acting like you can't ask these questions. This is not a fight against the outside world. This is a fight again inside our community. This, this is what this is. This is a fight inside of our community. You don't gotta like me, fine. But are the questions that I'm asking valid? Huh? Do I make sense? Even a little bit? Even if you don't like me? Do I make sense? And if I, if you don't like me, what you doing over here? Huh? Let me do my commentary to my six or eight people in peace. Huh? If I can't get a thousand views, who business is it? What business is it of yours? Let me give a big shout out. I want to give a big, big, big shout out to Keys News Network. If you're not subscribed to them or him, go over there and check out Big Key. Big Key. Shout out to you, sir. Salute to you, sir. Keep doing your thing. Great channel. Go check him out. Well, that's all I got to say for today. This, this was, like I said, the same shit, different day. Different people, but we still doing the same dance. We still doing the same thing. Paul, maybe we should abolish the townships because they not providing any services. They doing what they want and they get more money coming through them than the actual village, than the actual municipality. Townships are notorious. They get twenty-five, twenty-four million dollars plus rolling through these townships. We should get rid of every last one of them in this state. Just for that, what we are watching unfold for the second time. For the second time, just for that reason alone. We should. Because they are not servicing the people. They are not serving the people. They are serving themselves. And the people are being hurt in the process. Now, that's my opinion and ain't nothing you can do about it. But the super producer wishes nothing but blessings for your life. Huh? If you can't be good, be quiet. You don't got nothing to add? Be quiet. Y'all go out there in those YouTube streets and enjoy whatever channels you want to watch. And watch and comment responsibly. That's my PSA for today. I'll see, uh, to my private members, I'll see you guys tomorrow night. We'll be starting the John Casperic deposition tomorrow night in my private community. All right? Y'all take it more than easy. What song y'all want me to play y'all out on? What we doing? What song y'all want? Let me know in the comments, what song y'all want to hear? To play y'all up out of here. Because people be in these comments, windmilling and fighting for their life. They aren't responsive to the residents at all. Why I'ma go? What song y'all want to put, want me to play y'all up out of here on? My choice? Let me see. I'm looking for the song I want. Let me see, can I find it? Oh, there you go. See y'all tomorrow night, members only.